I call this meeting the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. That's kind of freaky. I thank Mr. Dowell for running through last week's meeting, or the last meeting we had, because I was out of town on business. So I appreciate his efforts there. 2.02, certification of closed session. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, and considered.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Owenby. Any discussion? Ms. Aller?
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Owenby?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. Ms. Aller, could you take the role, please?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Here.
Ms. Hummel?
Here.
Ms. Owenby?
Here.
Mrs. Young?
Here.
Mr. Dowell?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here. Thank you. Ms. Cook is not here this evening. She has a family commitment, so it keeps her from attending. Can I get a motion for approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Mrs. Owenby, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Any discussion? Ms. Aller?
Ms. Owenby?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Thank you. 4.01, announcement superintendent's report. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My report this evening begins with a tremendous thank you to our teachers and staff. This week is National Teacher Appreciation Week, and we are so fortunate to have the best and brightest teachers in Virginia right here in Williamsburg. Although we cannot celebrate in a large group, school leadership is visiting buildings this week to recognize our phenomenal teachers. This week is also WJCC Schools Employee Appreciation Week, and it is an opportunity to celebrate all of our employees for the incredible work they do to keep our buildings clean and our students fed, healthy, and learning. This evening, we invite the community to join us in honoring our teachers and staff. Tomorrow night, we will stream a special event celebrating our 2021 Support Employees of the Year. These outstanding staff members work tirelessly behind the scenes to keep buses running, prepare meals, service technology, and support instruction in our schools. We are so grateful for their many contributions and could not keep our schools open without them. Be sure to log into wjccschools.org to watch our Support Employee of the Year celebration tomorrow at 6:00 PM. Then, on Thursday night, we will honor the 2021 School Teachers of the Year, and we will announce who will represent the entire division as the 2021 WJCC Schools Teacher of the Year, and that will happen during a special presentation streaming live on our website. You can watch the announcement and event on Thursday evening at 6:00 by logging onto wjccschools.org. We truly appreciate and love all of our talented men and women who are part of the WJCC family. You can read more about them on our website and social media. Finally, we are delighted to congratulate the 2021 VHSL Class III Football State Champions, the Lafayette High School Rams. Congratulations, Head Coach Lynn, and the whole Lafayette team on your convincing win on Saturday. We are so proud of you. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring you a little bit up to date on a couple of things that have come out of the HARETTA Committee, which is down with WHRO. Couple of things just to mention is that WJCC schools have been using at least 25 courses that are put together by WHRO, and those include math, science, English, health, and P.E., and history. And currently, we have almost 500 students who are participating in those courses through the virtual learning program. They also help with blended and hybrid instruction at all three high schools. And the, I guess, one of the really important pieces of information, the districts that are part of Region 2, and we're in that region, belong to HARETTA, and also pay a fee for membership with WHRO. And one number that's really, I think, really important to hear about, this was the school year 19 to '20, obviously, we don't have '20 to '21 yet, but for every dollar WJCC spent with WHRO, they got back almost $20, $20. So that's a very, very good investment, and I just wanted to bring you up to date on some of that.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Anybody else have any announcements or reports? Okay, that moves us to 5.01, citizens' comments. We're returning back to public comment being in person here at the dais. We have one speaker this evening. Prior to that, Mr. Dowell, could you read the instructions?
Yes, Mr. Chair. At this point, our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their name for the record, and direct their comment to the chair of the board. It is the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, the citizens are asked not to engage in applauding, verbal outbursts of any type, or any other type of demonstration during the presentation. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. And each speaker is allocated three minutes to make their presentation, and the board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to any other speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. And that concludes the directions, Mr. Speaker.
And our first and only speaker tonight is Ms. Tanya Whitaker.
Hello, my name is Tanya Whitaker. I'm here to discuss or go against the translation apps due to the contacts being wrong when you use a translator app. The American language is different than a lot of the other languages, especially Spanish. Once you change the sentence structure, the outcome of the sentence, the meaning changes entirely. So the apps will basically get everybody lost. I also earlier found out that there is a, as far as the apps being secured, they're not, because they're a third party as well. And I would say that using a personal real person would be a better option.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. First public speaker of 2021. That takes us 6.01, review school year 2021 calendar revisions. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Kiefer is going to take us through some proposed changes for the final marking period of this year. Mr. Kiefer?
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, School Board members. This evening, want to share with you several proposed modifications to marking period four. Some of these modifications we've been talking about since October, based on the operational status of WJCC. Modification number one that we would like to propose is the idea of removing the elementary early release on June 11th. That is a Friday. Currently, our elementary students are not physically present in school on Fridays. There's asynchronous opportunities that day, so we would remove that from the calendar. Additionally, we are recommending a shift in the high school exam days. Those would begin on Monday, June 14, and run through Thursday, June 17. Those four days would be early release days for high schools. We're also proposing that the formal last day of school shift from June 18 to June 17, and that'd be an early release day across the Division K-12. And finally, the designation of graduation dates. We've shared those dates with you already, but we would designate those in the calendar for June 18 and June 19. There are several reasons and rationale for making these modifications. One of the key ones is related to some of the technology pieces that we need to collect from students to be able to re-inventory and then have shipped out so that we can be best prepared for the '21-'22 school year. That process begins in that second week in June and concludes soon thereafter. Additionally, at the high school level, the idea of shifting the exams allows us to be able to have those outside graduations during the day on that Friday, the 18th, which we previously announced. As a result of the proposed modifications, here's how the calendar would look for the general public once approved by the board at your next meeting.
Any questions from board members? Basically, we're just cleaning up some calendar issues as a result of the four-day-per-week, predominantly.
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
This will be on our agenda next time for approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay. 6.02, review purchase request of laptops for elementary student use and the associated budget transfer. I see Mr. Landers is in position, but Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to hand straight over to Mr. Landers to present this item this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. This agenda item is to ask for your consideration of and approval at the next meeting of purchasing elementary student-use laptops and services, and the supporting budget transfer and continuation of our ongoing technology refresh cycle. Technology supply lines are remaining a challenge with delayed fulfillment of orders, and this, as well as the next agenda item, will allow the Division to get our orders placed in a timely manner. The purchase request will provide 1,471 elementary student laptops, as well as insurance and extended services, for a total purchase price of $792,920. The purchase will be made using the TIPS contract with Lenovo. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from board members? Okay, so the budget request is coming from cost savings as a result of instructional salaries and benefits?
That's correct, sir.
And this is just a normal refresh?
Yes, sir.
And this enables these laptops are out of this year's budget, because they can be delivered by June 30?
Okay. June 30, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Landers?
Or will be the first one.
Ms. Young?
Mr. Landers, this is a refresh. We refresh every year. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. On average, we have to refresh approximately 3,500 to 3,800 devices every year to remain on our four-year cycle.
Right. That's what I wanted to make sure the public understood. So we are on a cycle, so we're refreshing laptops every year. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And that helps to put that hit over many years versus all in one big chunk. Any other comments from board members? Excellent. 6.03, review purchase request of laptops for middle school student use. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is another request for laptops that is slightly different budget-wise from the previous one. Mr. Landers?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. This agenda item is to ask for your consideration and approval at the next meeting of purchasing middle school student-use laptops and services in support of our refresh cycle. This purchase will be made using fiscal year '22 funds, and we will ask for your approval of this agenda item at the next meeting after you have approved the final budget. The purchase request will provide 800 middle school student laptops, as well as insurance and extended services, for a total purchase price of $474,800. This purchase will also be made using the TIPS contract with Lenovo. Thank you, and again, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from board members? Ms. Owenby?
So just to confirm, we'll be approving this request at the May 18 meeting, so that you can get that order in, so that we can have our computers when school starts. So I just want to
Yes, ma'am.
thank staff for being proactive, so that we won't be left in the lurch, when every other school division is also doing their refresh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is using next-year dollars versus this-year dollars, so it's a fiscal year '22.
Right. Right. So pointing that out, that we're being proactive, approving it now rather than later, because as we know, everything is taking longer to get in every category.
That's for sure. Any other questions, board members?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Can I just go back to the elementary school real quick?
Sure.
So I know that prior to or during COVID, prior to COVID, for elementary school, we purchased a number of iPads, not iPads, but what do you call those things?
Chromebook?
Tablets.
A tablet.
And we're not using tablets. We're not going back to tablets. I guess it wasn't, you know, it lacked efficiency for elementary school students. What happens to those tablets? Are they being recycled, sold?
Well, we actually had two separate purchases over a number of years of tablets. These laptops will replace that original purchase that are at end-of-life anyway. The other tablets will remain at the pre-K and kindergarten levels.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Great clarification. Thank you. Any other questions from board members? Both of those two items will be on our agenda for approval at the next meeting. 6.04, review contract number 1913759, Stonehouse chiller replacement. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Snipes is going to present this item to us this evening. Thank you, Mr. Snipes.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Kelly, School Board members, Dr. Heron. Tonight's proposed agenda item is a review of the contract for Stonehouse chiller replacement. Stonehouse Elementary School currently has two 175-ton chillers. One chiller was replaced in 2017 and is fully operational. The other chiller was installed in 2000 and has reached the end of its 20-year useful life. The building HVAC systems should not and cannot function properly using only one operating chiller. The two chillers are needed to offset the lows created for humidity, especially during the summer, when we are trying to avoid uncomfortable warm and humid conditions which could foster indoor air quality issues. The scope of work for this project includes installing a 170-ton high-efficiency air-cooled chiller, retrofitting existing chiller water supply and return piping, and integrating new chiller, integrating new chiller into an existing control system. Colonial Web has an annual contract with James City County Purchasing under contract number 1913759, and the total cost of the project of approximately $160,000 is budgeted within our CARES Act funding. Superintendent recommends you review the information and be prepared to award at your May 18, 2021 School Board meeting. I'll be able to answer any questions.
Any questions from board members? Mr. Dowell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It seems maybe relatively obvious, but we can use it, you can use that CARES Act funding because it has to do with air quality. Is it that simple?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Great proactive replacement there. Moving on, 6.05, review purchase request for world-language instructional materials and the associated budget transfer. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Worley is going to present this item this evening. We have purchased or brought forward some world-language materials already, and this adds to that purchase. Dr. Worley?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Dr. Heron, and members of the board. Tonight, we present for your consideration our request to purchase world-language instructional materials, as well as the associated budget transfers to support the purchase. This supports Goal One of our strategic plan and provides our world-language teachers access to relevant real-world and rigorous instructional materials that align with Virginia's newly revised world-language standards. This purchase completes the world-language resource and textbook needs for German, Latin, and Spanish. This includes classroom textbook sets and a six-year digital license applicable for Levels 1 through AP. Additionally, this includes classroom textbook sets and a one-year digital license for Levels 1 through AP and French. We will need to purchase the updated digital versions of French when the new edition is released in 2022. Total cost for this one-time purchase is $385,500. The purchase of multi-year digital licenses is the most cost-effective approach, as we saw a significant increase in price if we spread this purchase across several fiscal years. For example, for German, a single one-year license is $39.54, or $237.24 for the six-year license. If we purchase the six years upfront, the cost is $115.95 per license, which is a savings of $121.29 per license. And the big picture is, if we need 545 licenses to support German in middle school and high school, purchasing the six-year bundle is a savings of $66,103.50. We recommend the board consider purchasing the bundles at one time, as this is the most effective cost approach to support our world-language needs. We will revisit this on the 18th. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Any questions from board members? Ms. Hummel?
I just have one question. It sounds, you know, very good to bundle and do all the cost savings. Do we ever look at the actual, like, declining rates or increasing rates in the need for different students signing up for German or signing up for French or whatever, and then to go, oh, are we ever going to be in a position where having a multi-year contract is not the best idea, because you've got That's a great question. We actually typically stay around the same range. We have a lot in the 1, 2, and 3, and then a decline. So we do have an estimate. We also have a little bit, we'll budget in the line item to cover in case we have more, because we want to be careful of both ends of the puzzle with that. But yes, we took into account looking at course requests over the last couple of years, and we based this purchase off an estimate looking at our current course requests as well. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Dr. Heron, is this on our agenda for tonight to approve?
Actually, it's coming next, at the next meeting.
We approved the contracts and the RFP over the last two times, and this is a purchase.
So what's 9.02?
Yes, Mr. Kelly, you're correct. We put it on action as well, but we wanted to bring it for discussion as well, in case there were any questions about the increase in the numbers.
And the reason why we're doing this tonight versus
Delivery
the reason why we want to do it tonight versus
Delivery by June 30?
Sorry?
Delivery by June 30.
Delivery by June 30, right. So if the board doesn't have any issues, normally, we'd like to have a discussion and then wait till the next meeting to approve. Does any issues with leaving this on the agenda at 9.02? None here. So that way, we can make budget for this fiscal year. Okay. The previous one, the Stonehouse chiller, is on for next agenda.
That's correct, sir.
Okay. 6.06, review application for VSBA Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're pleased to present to you today an application for a workforce readiness award, and Ms. Walters, who's been working on this, is here to present it to you this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Dr. Heron, and members of the board. I'd also like to welcome WJCC's career coach, Sherri Thrift, who will be here with me as well tonight. Virginia School Boards Association annually recognizes school divisions within Virginia who have achieved excellence in workforce readiness through an innovative program or project within their school community. The Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award holds an emphasis on communication and collaboration with the business community, student engagement with the business community, or student entrepreneurial activities. A requirement of each application for this recognition is that the entry is approved by the local school board at a school board meeting. Today, it is my privilege to present to you the WJCC Application for the Virginia School Boards Association Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award for our work in the creation of three dual-enrollment health science courses for WJCC students. In alignment with our strategic plan, Elevate Beyond Excellence, the VSBA Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award application supports academic achievement and college and career readiness, educational equity, and access for all students, and communication and engagement of a variety of stakeholders. In the fall of 2018, representatives from Thomas Nelson Community College, Williamsburg James City County Schools, James City County Economic Development, and the James City County Economic Development Authority began meeting to discuss workforce needs in our community. The group members discussed and reviewed local employment data, in addition to what they had been hearing from local employers, and determined that healthcare should be the first industry of focus within this partnership. The next step the group took was to survey healthcare employers in the Williamsburg James City County region. Over 60 healthcare employers were included in the data request, and the group obtained results from 16 different organizations. Results of this survey showed that the highest need over the next three years in the area was for nurse aides, medical assistants, and emergency medical technicians. After receiving the results of the survey, the group held a healthcare workforce summit here in Williamsburg, where close to 60 representatives from local healthcare employers, TNCC, WJCC, and interested community W J C C, and interested community organizations were present. The summit included roundtable discussions as well as an extensive presentation on local, state, and national healthcare workforce trends. Summit attendees concluded that there was both a great need for entry-level healthcare workers and that education needed to start at the high school level with identifiable career pathways for future growth. The next step in our process was to conduct a student interest survey aligned with the results of the summit. Our 7th through 11th graders in CTE courses were surveyed regarding interest in the health and medical sciences field. We received responses from over 600 students that demonstrated an interest in the healthcare field, with 22% of respondents indicating the goal of entering the healthcare field after finishing school. Of those students surveyed, 23% indicated they would be interested in taking a health and medical science course while in high school. Students were specifically questioned about an interest in enrolling in nurse aide, medical assistant, or EMT, and the results showed that 170 students were interested in EMT, 107 students in nurse aide, and 189 students in medical assistant. With the summit and survey confirming the need for specific entry-level positions as well as identifiable student interest, TNCC and W J C C worked together to develop dual enrollment dual credit programs in nurse aide, medical assistant, and EMT for high school seniors. The result of this community-driven approach to program development was the creation and implementation of three dual enrollment courses, nurse aide, medical assistant, and emergency medical technician. These three programs all incorporate workplace readiness skills throughout instruction, preparing students to go directly into the workforce upon completion. In addition to career readiness lessons that are incorporated throughout instruction in each course, nurse aide requires 48 hours of clinicals in one of Williamsburg's community-assisted living facilities. EMT students take part in two field experiences, a 12-hour ride-along with local emergency services department, and 12 hours in the emergency room at one of our local hospitals. And medical assistant students spend 20 hours in a doctor's office, hospital, or other healthcare facility, where they put their knowledge and skills into practice. These hands-on, work-based learning experiences enhance students' preparation to work directly in the field upon graduation. Currently, W J C C will have 19 students that will complete their programs and sit for their certifying exam in June of this school year. This spring marks the end of our first year of implementation of the dual enrollment healthcare programs. Through our partnership with TNCC, W J C C plans to enhance the student experience next year by adding Future Focus Fridays and a summer healthcare boot camp option. Future Focus Fridays will be monthly workshops hosted by W J C C's career coach for our healthcare students to provide more in-depth career readiness information and practice. These workshops will help students develop and refine their resumes, give an in-depth look at post-high school options, both college and career, and hold mock interview sessions. Students will also hear from healthcare professionals regarding what they look for when hiring, education and training needs, career pathways, and much more. Additionally, W J C C, in partnership with TNCC, will offer a one-week healthcare boot camp over the summer to prepare students for college coursework and these programs specifically. Students will learn about college expectations, healthcare terminology, healthcare careers, and much more. Upon completion of the class, they will receive one TNCC credit for S D V 101, College Success Skills and Orientation to the Health Sciences. By starting this process with an identified community need defined by the healthcare survey and the healthcare workforce summit, W J C C's healthcare programs initiative was created at the high school level to directly respond to those needs. W J C C, with its partners, plans to continue to use this model in exploring additional industry sectors. By starting with a needs-based approach, we are able to make informed, programmatic decisions for our high school students that lead to high-demand jobs in our community. Thank you for your time this evening. This concludes our formal presentation of the Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award application. We are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Allenby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Walter, for this. I think this is very exciting, and it's great that we're partnering with the community and listening to what their needs are. I know I was at my mother-in-law's nursing home today, and they definitely are, need aides. I think probably every elder care facility in Williamsburg definitely needs additional staff. I was just curious, though, back in the day, 15, 20 years ago, the division had a CNA program. How was, how was, and this is more robust than that because there's the EMT piece as well, but how is this different? Is it the community partnership? Is it because they're taking classes at Thomas Nelson? How is this different than what we did 15 or 20 years ago? Just so the community understands.
I'm not very familiar with what we did 15 to 20 years ago, but I can express that this is also a dual enrollment dual credit option for our students. The partnerships that we have created, not just with TNCC but with community organizations, has our students working directly in our community for their clinical experiences, exposing them to potential job opportunities directly out of high school. Excuse me. I can look back and, and follow up with you on what the program was like 15 to 20 years ago, but I do feel that one of the main differences may be that dual credit option.
And so to that point, so students receive the S D V, which is like the college success one credit. So there's, there's duly enrolled credit with each of these three career options? Is it two credits, three credits? How many?
So each course is a total of six college credits and one high school credit. And then the S D V 100 hasn't started yet, but that's something that's in the moving forward. That's something we'll be adding in this, starting this coming school year, so this coming summer. S D V 101. It's, TNCC has multiple different S D V 100 level courses. They're one-credit courses that are introductory to the college environment, helps make students, make sure that students know how to access important information for their college experience, how to get to, how to find their transcript, how to, how to pay their bills, really important skills that they need.
What does it stand for?
I'm sorry, S D V?
Yeah, what does it stand for?
I'd have to look. It's a TNCC course code.
Okay.
Just a couple of follow-up questions. So all the coursework, is the coursework on the campus of Thomas Nelson, the classes are actually at Thomas Nelson?
Yes.
So it's different than our early college program, which ideally, so those, those students spend an entire semester at Thomas Nelson. So how is this structured? Because this is a class.
It is. So it's actually, it's a little bit different this year because of COVID, but in, TNCC has worked with us, that it's the fourth block of our bell schedule each day. So the last block each day. They've actually helped build these classes around our bell schedule, which was very helpful. Our students go to TNCC for both the class and the labs. With the exception of this year, the lectures were virtual and the labs were in person. But that was only due to COVID. So the, the students, in a normal year, will go on campus to TNCC every day.
That's wonderful, and I definitely like the hands-on piece, though. Wonderful, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other board member comments? Ms. Hummel?
It stands for student development.
Thank you. Student development.
I was like going, I can Google this. So anyway, yes, I think it's great. Thank you so much for bringing it to our attention. My daughter, when she was in high school, did one of those internships with a local dermatologist, and it was fascinating for her and really piqued her interest, and that's why she became a nurse. So anyway, I just, I think all of this is just a win-win for our students, so thank you. Thanks for all your work.
Absolutely.
Any other board member comments? Mr. Dow?
Thank you for your report. And in my day job, I get to interact with a lot of students and high school students and soon-to-be seniors, graduating seniors, and I always ask them, what are you going to do after college, or excuse me, after high school? And they're staying local. So many are staying local, and they're going right to TNCC. And so to be able to begin that in the high school years is, is really a benefit to them. As I was listening, I think I heard you say that this collaboration began back in 2018 and probably earlier than that, and that the healthcare industry was that most, the biggest need or the greatest need that they identified in 2018. I'm wondering if there was a second, or if there was another burgeoning industry that these community development agencies saw on the horizon and that we can get ahead of, perhaps?
And, and I'll let Ms. Thrift correct me if I'm wrong, because she was present in those meetings, but I believe that manufacturing came in as a close second.
Yes, manufacturing and trades. And that will be the next summit we hold, which we hope to hold in September. We were going to do it last year, but because of COVID, we held off.
Excellent, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Things were a little different last year, weren't they?
Just a little.
Any other board member comments? Ms. Allenby, I'm not sure Ms. Walter was in high school herself 20 years ago, so...
Oh, you're very kind.
I think it's great to see things come back again. I was very sad when we let that program go.
So one of the questions I had was completing the fieldwork in our COVID times, how did that, how did that go?
Ms. Thrift, do you want to answer that? You speak directly with the teachers.
We kind of held it off to the end of the year, so they're now doing, they're, they have allowed, I mean, it was iffy for a while, but the Williamsburg Landing is allowing the nurse aides to do their clinical there, and some students are going to be doing ride-alongs on the ambulances and working at the hospital, and then the medical assistants. They're primarily doing their clinical time in class right now because they couldn't find a doctor's office to take them, but they will next year definitely be doing that in person somewhere. But it has been delayed. I mean, they were supposed to do it at the beginning of the semester, but delayed it as long as possible.
And so in order to apply for this V SBA award, it needs to be approved by the school board?
That's correct, sir.
I think this is a great collaboration and partnership with our business community to meet a need that actually is in our community. And so I think, I think this is a great model for other school, school systems to follow. And so I, I look forward to hopefully us being successful here with this award, so...
Thank you.
Any other comments from board members before we move? This will be on our agenda next, for the next meeting for approval. Thank you, Ms. Walter, Ms. Swift, appreciate it.
7.01, Strategic Plan Update, Goal 4. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, we're going to give you an update on Goal 4. If you remember, you had an update on Goal 3 from Ms. Cox at two meetings ago, and we're going to try to every meeting, bring you an update on some of the things that have been happening through the year. Obviously, we've had to adjust many of our strategies and goals in a very different environment, but we certainly have still been moving forward with a lot of work, and we want to present that to you and to the public this evening. And I believe Ms. Bergerot is going to lead us off as goal champion of Goal 4, and she'll be joined by three other members this evening. Ms. Bergerot?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. This evening's strategic plan update focuses on Goal 4, Safety and Security. This goal is an excellent example of the strategic plan's ability to encompass initiatives that can be foreseen as well as those that no one anticipated. Goal 4 is a multifaceted goal encompassing initiatives that address safety and security at the facility level as well as personal, physical, and emotional safety for our students and staff. For the 2020-21 school year, the Goal 4 team focused on five of the six identified strategies. These include research-based initiatives to support the social-emotional well-being of our students, strategic adjustments to our facility maintenance protocols to implement thorough mitigation procedures, implementation of additional safety trainings around sexual harassment and restraint and seclusion, additional technological infrastructure to successfully support the escalated transition to one-to-one devices for all students, and creatively building networks to support healthy eating and physical activity. Our first strategy focuses on the well-being of our students and staff. At the beginning of the year, counselors and teachers received training on five competencies identified by the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning, also known as CASL. These competencies are self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and social awareness, and are the center of our SEL work. Our teachers, schools, families, and community are all essential to supporting students in the development of these characteristics. Our school counselors and school MTSS teams work collaboratively to provide resources and training to teachers and school leaders. Elementary teachers are using resources from Sanford Harmony to embed SEL competencies into morning meetings and daily classwork. Middle school teachers use the Second Step Curriculum, which has 26 lessons in it. Division staff is also working on the curriculum plan for high school, and this work will continue into next year. This July, the Virginia Department of Education will be releasing a set of standards for social-emotional learning. The work done this year and the continued implementation of the social-emotional competencies in future years will result in stronger, more resilient students. A key indicator for Strategy 1 is the amount of time students are provided direct counseling services. This chart shows direct service time percentages for this year as compared to last year. Our counselors offered multiple opportunities for small group and individual sessions every week, but they did find virtual sessions created some challenges in connecting with students. Lessons also had to be adapted to the virtual environment, and this activity, while essential to a successful session, is not considered a direct service activity and created an impact on time available. Recognizing these challenges, our school counselors worked tirelessly to find ways to connect with students, to include socially-distanced home visits, Zoom sessions, and phone calls and texts. To support these efforts, W J C C schools provided every counselor with a division cell phone, and it is planned to have this resource continue to be available in future years. The state goal for direct services is 80%, and while we have shown some growth, we have not yet reached that benchmark. Additional counselor positions in the Fiscal Year 22 operating budget, along with additional positions made available through grant funding, will have a significant positive impact on direct service percentages next year. Recognizing the importance of safety as a crucial piece of the school culture, we do want to acknowledge the Herculean efforts by staff this year to ensure a safe learning and working environment. For example, in addition to their regular duties, our nurses have taken on a crucial role in the vaccination and contact tracing responsibilities. Both these areas required additional training and certification. To date, over 1,600 W J C C staff have received the vaccination. The custodial and operations staff have developed and implemented cleaning protocols to ensure frequent cleaning and disinfecting of classrooms and workspaces. The creation of the Health Advisory Committee provides constant monitoring of our response to the pandemic and reviews changes to the mitigation guidelines as requirements change. And the school safety teams have made over 175 visits to schools and provided specific feedback to ensure consistent implementation of the mitigation protocols in order to ensure a culture of safety. At this time, Mr. Snipes will provide a summary of Strategy 2.
Thank you, Stephanie. Strategy 2 of Goal 4 focuses on the development and implementation of ongoing assessment and improvement of facility, transportation, and campus security. And as you are aware, this year has been like no other. Our operations team has met every challenge presented and developed specific bus safety and facility cleaning protocols, addressed air purification for every room and office in the division through the use of MERV filters and/or portable air purifiers. In addition, they've implemented detailed cleaning protocols. Stop-arm camera initiative has begun, and all the buses will have cameras installed by August of 2021. Lastly, operations recently received a grant to begin installation of open-door alert systems and message boards in our division. The first two schools that will receive the installation, installation of the open-door alert systems will be Berkeley Middle School and Lafayette High School. The first three schools to receive message boards are Berkeley, Lafayette, and James Blair Middle School. Mr. Baker will now share data on safety and training.
Strategy 3 includes the establishment of a master safety training matrix of requirements and responsibilities by position. Please note that the training numbers will fluctuate as employees join and leave the school division. Many annual trainings are completed using Safe Schools, an online module system that tracks our staff completion of the required components. Two significant training requirements added this year are Title IX and sexual harassment training and restraint and seclusion training. You may recall from a previous policy presentation that the federal regulations for Title IX will revise effective August 14, 2020. A revision component required training for all division staff on Title IX components such as definitions and reporting requirements. To date, 1,600 To date, 1,660 W J C C staff have completed this training. In fall of 2020, the Virginia Department of Education released new requirements for restraint and seclusion of students in Virginia schools. Training of all division staff using a series of modules created by Old Dominion University was required. To date, 1,738 W J C C staff have completed this training. As our work continues in this area, the matrix will continue to be redefined to provide a clear roadmap for safety trainings in our division.
Strategy four focuses on maintaining the availability and security of our network and devices. Even through a pandemic, the threats against our network continue. Our staff regularly monitors various attacks, and our tools and partnerships, such as the Multi-State Information Sharing and Analysis Center, play a key role in keeping our network staff current with notices of threats and trends in the cyber arena. Ransomware, brute force attacks, social engineering, and phishing continue to be the predominant areas of risk. Metrics that we monitor focus on two overall objectives: accessibility of the network to allow our staff and students to conduct the work needed to support teaching and learning, and security to ensure that our network remains accessible and the data is not compromised. Under accessibility, we monitor our bandwidth utilization, with the goal that the average consumption should not exceed 85% in order to allow some room for peak periods. This year, we have averaged 70%. We also monitored the available kilobits per second per student, which federal guidelines have set a goal of at least 100, which we exceed and are currently at over 420. In the area of security, we monitor our firewall logs for threat indications, and in order to combat them, we must ensure that our firewall has all applicable updates and patches on an ongoing basis. This measure must always be 100% current, which we have also met. We must be sure that our staff have the resources to keep on top of trends and the technological advances by taking advantage of professional development. Our goal is that our network staff attend at least two industry P D sessions per year each, and we have also met that target. Security is also everyone's responsibility at some level. A single instance of falling for a phishing scam could introduce malware to our network. This year, all new hires completed a Safe Schools module on email security, and we will also require a refresher for all staff this coming year. A lot of work took place behind the scenes to meet these objectives and at the same time ensure that our network was ready for the rapid expansion of devices that our one-to-one laptop program presented, as we responded to COVID with remote learning supports. To further support security this year with a number of additional devices connected to our network, we have implemented multi-factor authentication to access the W J C C school's network and resources. This provides an additional layer of protection against phishing and brute force attacks, ensuring that the user really is who they claim to be. We implemented a new program for teachers that allow them to monitor what a student is doing with their device during the scheduled class time to ensure that students remain on topic. We have also added security to all of our laptops to redirect them through our firewall, no matter where they may be physically located. This ensures that all of our devices receive the same level of protection, whether they are at home or in our classrooms. For bandwidth and availability, we have doubled our internet connection available bandwidth to provide more throughput for the additional devices and to ensure that we do not exceed the 85% saturation point. We have added two external access points to each of our schools that cover the main parking areas to allow students and staff to access our network outside of the buildings. A critical effort was to address the need of internet access at home for those that did not have any. We have provided 240 portable MiFi's to students that were without internet access at home. Lastly, but certainly needed, was the addition of a network engineer position. With the board's support, thank you, a new staff member was added to assist the ever-growing and ever-changing cyber landscape and the advancements and threats that it contains. This new position has been brought on board and is currently learning our network alongside their new coworkers. I will now pass it back to Ms. Bourgeois.
Our final strategy is to strengthen our culture of health and well-being by supporting nutrition education, healthy eating, and physical activity. SHIP staff provided resources for the daily wellness block, which included physical activities, cooking lessons, and stress reduction techniques. More than 85 videos have been created and are available on the SHIP YouTube library channel. 154 active learning lessons based on core S O L standards were also provided to teachers. One example is having our kindergarten students exercising the letters of the alphabet. SHIP staff also created nutrition lessons for our K 12-2 students to participate in a series of six sessions per grade. These lessons align with the Virginia Health S O L objectives. This year, farm to school shifted to farm to school to home. Through collaboration with Child Nutrition Services and the Grab and Go program, families received an activity booklet containing recipes, nutrition education, and activities, along with the seasonal vegetable provided, which in the fall was over 2,700 pounds of squash, and in the winter, it was potatoes for the families to cook at home. Our challenge club offerings for yoga, martial arts, and dance occurred virtually at a reduced capacity. A virtual garden club had 300 families participate in growing window gardens. And this year, a SHIP cooking challenge will be held next week. Families will receive the items provided to create their own recipe using what they have learned from the nutrition and cooking lessons. SHIP has provided a cooking challenge bag for each board member so that you too can experience the challenge. You'll receive a bag following tonight's meeting. Challenge on. In conclusion, I want to give you an idea of what's next. We will, of course, continue work in each of the areas presented tonight. Moving forward, there will be a renewed focus on strategy five of this goal area, which is to build a positive and inclusive school culture that inspires all students to participate fully in their school experience. This strategy is closely aligned with goal one of the strategic plan, academic achievement, college, and career readiness. Staff will foster a student-centered environment and create resources and opportunities for students to own their learning through goal-setting and decision-making. Mr. Chairman, that concludes tonight's presentation. We are happy to answer any questions from the board.
Thank you, Ms. Bourgeois. Ms. Young?
Yes, Ms. Bourgeois, thank you for the presentation tonight and for everybody else that participated. I did have a question because I was really hopeful last year when it was decided that our counselors would spend 80% of their time with direct instruction, and so it's kind of disappointing to see those figures, but is that largely due to COVID, or was there other factors that played into that?
We did see some improvements from middle school, but we know that in elementary school, a challenge was connecting virtually, and they tried different strategies, but that was one of the impacts, yes.
Okay.
Ms. Young, one thing we did do that was mentioned tonight is every counselor was given a phone so that they could make those connections, but we are adding eight counselors next year, and that's really going to help us get to that 80/20.
Okay, great. Thank you, and I'm sure next year will be much better.
Ms. Owen?
I have a few questions and comments, building on Ms. Young's questions about the percentage of time direct services that counselors are providing. I was just curious why, it's understandable why there was a downtick, but I was curious that middle school actually went up? Like, what was different with middle school?
We've asked that question. I don't know that we've gotten some, many specifics. I do know that they didn't have, they had more availability at times during the day than they might in a regular, typical school day. I think some of that had to do with just some of those other duties that you have when you're in the school building. So they found more availability. Middle schoolers are also going to tend to be more responsive to things like text messages and those, reaching out in that sort of manner.
Thank you. I was just curious about that, just a couple additional questions. And so I just wanted to reiterate, too, the cellphones, I think, are great, particularly when several years ago, in response to budget cuts, we eliminated the support position in the guidance office. I know as a parent, it was difficult oftentimes to get to the counselor because you would leave a message or get an email. I think that they were just inundated, and I know my own experience with my last two, whenever I call a counselor on their cellphone, they answered it. Even sometimes when they weren't technically working, I'd plan to leave a message, but we had staff, especially at the beginning of the pandemic, were just Johnny on the spot, and so having that direct access for families is huge. Thank you for that. And then again, just wanted to reiterate that Ms. Bourgeois said Herculean efforts. So I think with the mitigation efforts and with all of our safety and security measures, thanks to our staff, and this has just been incredible year where we've asked staff to do a lot of things to keep our students, to keep their environment safe, and so thank you to that. I was curious, Mr. Snipes, with regard to the stop-arm, do we have data on that? Like, so some of our buses have it now, but not all of them. Have we, have we stopped people? Like, have, have we?
People gotten letters in the mail?
People gotten letters?
Requesting a check.
Actually, they, we have not installed them on our buses as of yet.
Okay.
So we have, our drivers have been giving us some unofficial data. We've met with the county police, the Williamsburg James City County Police, and we've met with a judge in regards to how many they expect, so they know their caseloads. But no, we have not offered or given anybody any tickets as of yet, and from what I understand, there will be a 30-day grace period after it is initiated.
I thought we were just going to go just throw out.
I hate the grace period.
I think, I believe that is a request from the police and the city of Williamsburg Police that we give people a 30-day grace. We can always go back to the table and ask.
We can certainly, Mr. Snipes, perhaps suggest that the grace period has been this year.
And was it delayed because of COVID?
That is true, but we will, we will definitely ask, yes.
Was it delayed because of COVID? Like, were we supposed to start this last September?
We weren't running buses.
Well, we were virtual, so everything got slowed.
I realize that, but like, if COVID wasn't a thing, would it have started in last September?
It would have started earlier, yes.
Okay, so I think we have talked about it enough that the public has gotten information.
We can certainly revisit it, but we're certainly trying to work with our partners and be very fair to our community as well, although to go past a bus when a stop-arm was out is incredibly inappropriate.
It's not a new thing. It's another thing.
Because Henry Ford was a boy.
Yeah, I just have two more things, Mr. Chair. Thank you. So, and then Ms. Bourgeois, going back to, I'm very excited about the last slide, what's next? So building a positive and inclusive school culture that inspires all students to participate fully. So with my work with the Special Education Advisory Committee and working as a liaison, I know that the bulk of that committee's work has been looking at kind of national guidelines and guidance for how to best include students with disabilities and the general curriculum, and so I just hope that we, and that that's a part of this, because our students with disabilities sometime need inspiration maybe from the adults in their life to fully include them, as opposed to it's not necessarily on them to be fully included?
Absolutely. That will be an integral part of this. It'll, it'll also work very closely with the equity initiatives that, looking at how to provide access to all students and be able to support them where they are to be successful.
That's exciting. And then just lastly, Mr. Landers, thank you for your Herculean efforts, because I think that our division is doing a wonderful job with the ever-changing technology landscape and making sure that we're secure and that our students are safe when they're accessing the internet. So thank you for responding to all of that, which has been, and getting us up and running. Again, that has been just insane this year with the amount of technology and everything that you've done. So thank you to you and all your staff.
You're welcome. I'm fortunate to have a wonderful staff, and it has been a very interesting year.
No truer words have been said. Ms. Hummel?
I guess my, my reaction after hearing this was just like, wow, wow. I mean, this goal, more than any other goal, has been our focus this year on, it's pervaded every single, I guess, or overwhelmed all the other goals put together. So, and then looking at this is just seeing it all documented here and all the, what makes up safety and security, it's just, I have to say thank you to all of you for everything you've done. It's just amazing. Just one quick question, and that's the bandwidth question. Prior to this year, what was our bandwidth? Like, what, what was considered good bandwidth and how much were we utilizing? I mean, I just can't even imagine the difference this year.
It's funny, because what is considered good bandwidth changes every year, but last summer, before last summer, we were at 5 gig, and over the summer of '20, we upgraded to 10 gig for this current school year.
So that's, that upgrade really allowed us to?
It allowed us to be able to handle all the additional devices. If not for that upgrade, we would have been in trouble.
And then also, just thanks for all your work in getting the supplies that we needed, the computers, the tablets, all of that. So just hats off to you guys.
Thank you.
Any other comments from board members? I was, I have to say a couple of things first. The counseling issues that we've had, and not issues, but the services that we were providing, I know with New Horizons, the William &amp; Mary Family Counseling Center said that their actual, they were actually able to reach more students because they served the region, instead of the people from the region like Hampton and Newport News having to travel to William &amp; Mary, being able to connect with them via Zoom was much, was much better for them. They actually had a lot more, better, a lot better attendance, you know, and they kind of, I think they're going to kind of look at that going forward. The challenge was identifying students who needed those services, which is where our counselors come in, and not being able to meet with them in, you know, informal, in informal settings, much less formal settings, really kind of helped, kind of hindered that evaluation, that determination. So I'm looking forward to that improving as a.
Those daily interactions really helped with that, and that was not readily available.
And really get to know the students on a personal level versus in a formal Zoom. So as you were going through this presentation, I couldn't help but reflect back that when we approved this strategic plan, our thought about what ensuring a safe environment, facility, and transportation safety, technology systems was much different than what it is after the end of this year. It's just how ensuring a safe environment is defined a little bit differently now than when it was then.
I will say that I think as we were preparing this and pulling all this together, I think one of the things that the team was really proud of was the fact that, you know, obviously we, there were a lot of things that we didn't anticipate for this year, but we were able to still address the pieces of the strategic plan that had been purposefully included.
That we thought about two or three years ago.
So we were able to, we were able to move forward on our initiatives while still handling all the unexpected needs.
And jumping off from where Mrs. Hummel was saying, you know, how critical this was this year. I mean, this was, this was really probably the most important aspect of this year was the safety and security of our, our staff, our students, and our community, and it's great to see all the different ways that we were able to address those and to, and to meet those needs. And so I appreciate all the work that is put in by everybody on the staff. It's, I mean, certainly, it's a lot of the folks who are with Mr. Snipes and Mr. Landers, but, but it's, everybody on staff has, has had to address that, and so I appreciate all those, all that good work. And the technology, I mean, we, I think, I think when we, when we looked at this, we kind of had a vision for a high bar of what we would have to clear. Well, that was long gone, and, and it was necessary to meet the needs of our students this year. I was, I was, I don't know if Mr. Landers even knows, how many, how much bandwidth do we use on a typical day?
Well, we have a 10-gig primary connection, and any given day, we are averaging using about 70% of that. So that would be about seven gig of bandwidth per day.
Right, so, so at last year's numbers, we're, we're frozen. We're in, we're out of, we're out of the water on last year's 5-gigabyte numbers, so just an, just an incredible amount, and the security of that, because not, you're not necessarily accessing them within the network, right? There's people from out, from the house and, who are accessing all that remotely, and to, and to be able to accomplish all that in the way we have is, is really pretty remarkable. So I know everybody, every board member here. So I know everybody, every board member here appreciates all the work that is, is done in this goal and, and in these tasks and actions. So thank you very much. Any other comments from board members? All right. Thank you much. 8.01, revised policy DLB salary deductions.
We forgot one.
Return to learn? Okay, we'll stick to return to learn.
Mr. Chair, we've got a brief presentation on return to learn this evening, but just before Mr. Kiefer starts, you know, I want to publicly say thank you to staff as well, if I may, because we've literally pivoted in every single area and, and made things happen, and I'm very proud of the work they've done as well. So thank you. Mr. Kiefer, return to learn.
I apologize, Mr. Kiefer, and I already X-ed that off of my list, so I was moving on, so I apologize for that.
Well, but it will certainly shorten the presentation, and as a result, we guess we won't take questions. Good evening, board members. As Dr. Heron mentioned, we do have a brief presentation this evening on return to learn. You heard from Ms. Boujwa during her presentation that the health safety teams have been out and about, 170 visits, 175 visits, that number continues to increase, and we're seeing some really strong mitigation going on in our schools, and I'm pleased to report that. I think people are doing a great job, our students especially. I was in all three high schools on Monday, and as I told a group, I did not see any noses. And that's an indication that there is terrific mask-wearing going on. Sharing the dashboard with you in terms of our latest numbers for this week, you can see that approximately 128 students are in quarantine. Based on a question from Ms. Cook at our last meeting, she did ask, what are, what are the, what is the current data looking like? You'll remember that we get those reports now every couple of weeks, and they are behind. I did check today on the, the CDC COVID data tracking, and James City County is in the substantial community spread level down from high, and then Williamsburg is in the moderate. So it goes high, substantial, moderate, and low, and so both localities are starting to trend in the right direction in general. Wanted to share with the board two, two items that have come to the forefront here recently. One of those, and you might remember a question from Mr. Dowell at our last meeting around quarantine and quarantining status, and based on some advice and strong support from our health advisory team, we are revising our close-contact quarantine model to align with the CDC guidance. That would include symptom-free students being able and eligible to return to school after 10 days without a test. Currently, we have been saying 14. We're gonna drop that to 10 if they so choose to do that. And then system, symptom-free students may return to school after a negative test, which would be administered on day five or after, and seven days of being symptom-free. We also have been pleased to learn of some community options that are available for our families in terms of no-cost testing, to try to allow that. We, we learned from our health advisory team, and we've heard over the last several weeks that it is a, it is a particular challenge for families on that 14-day quarantine relative to close contacts. So we feel like this is the right thing to do. We'll be communicating this information as early as this evening with our families to let them know of this change. Additionally, we're excited to explore the idea of a vaccine clinic designed specifically for our students. Currently, students 16 and older are eligible based on the emergency use authorization. We're partnering with a community resource to be able to get that scheduled. Hope to have some details to share later this week. And then certainly, if there are additional emergency authorizations, we would work to include greater and greater numbers of our students in that opportunity. As we shared with you during our last presentation, we were building the level of excitement around bringing our secondary students back for four days of in-person learning. That began yesterday. There are, as I mentioned, very strong and consistent mitigation strategies taking place. Our classrooms are set up with three to six feet social distancing, as recommended by the CDC. We have different instructional models that are being utilized to accommodate larger classes, like physical education, fine and performing arts. If you'd been in and around central office yesterday afternoon, you may have seen the James Blair Band outside, working on some of their instruments. And then lunches are spread apart, and there are overflow rooms being used, and even some lunches in the classroom. Wanted to share just some brief pictures of what things were looking like in our secondary schools. These shots are from yesterday as we visited buildings and had an opportunity to be out and about. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I will, glad to answer any questions that may be coming forward.
Ms. Owenby?
Mr. Chair, a couple of questions. So with regard to the, the new changes for close contacts, so for students who choose to have a test, do they provide that documentation of the, of the negative to the school nurse? Like, who, how, what is that?
That would be correct. There, there would be documentation from the healthcare provider, the test results, back to the school nurse.
Okay, that's great. And then yay for the clinics, that's exciting. And then I, I have two questions that are about return to learn, but not, not really covered here, so if you, I'll just throw them out there, and maybe they can be answered now or later. So I know, it was my understanding, decision was made towards the end of last semester that final exams would only be used to help students' grades, not help them, in light of the challenging world we were experiencing this year. So is, is that, is that, is that true for, like, I know students, high school students, we talked about the exam schedule, so are, are final exams only going to help students' grades?
Ms. Owenby, I believe I have an answer for that, but I don't want to speak out of turn, and we'll, we'll be glad to follow up with you to make sure we get you the right information.
Okay, and then another thing, maybe you can, I don't need an answer right now. But I know, like, last time, we talked about each school as doing their own individual activities to, to celebrate our seniors. And so was thinking about, like, all the seniors' award ceremonies, you know, the CDC has released ease back, you know, the outside attendance, but inside is still small, so I am imagining we won't be able to host that typical award ceremony that we would. So is every school gonna kind of respond to, to that based on the culture of that school with regard to, like, cords and National Honor Society or those kinds of recognitions?
That, that is my understanding, that, that each school is working with their school-based team and, and the folks that generally help put together those celebrations in order to honor students and their accomplishments.
Thank you.
Any other board member comments? Ms. Hummel?
This goes, this is a question for the quarantine, and maybe actually more of a forward-thinking question about the quarantine, assuming, you know, now that's, 16 and over can get the vaccination, and then I know Pfizer is currently looking at, I think, what's it?
12 to 15.
12 plus?
12 to 15.
12 plus. So let's say come fall, we've got students that are actually vaccinated, would they fall under the same quarantine, quarantine limits that everybody else is if they've been exposed?
I think we would want some additional guidance from CDC and Virginia Department of Health on that, but we, we have a different quarantine status for our staff members who may have been exposed and who have been vaccinated, and, and I think we may anticipate it would look more like that than removing you from the, the classroom setting. But I, I think we need to be careful just relative to sort of speculative what happens in, in fall of '21.
Yeah.
I assume that we will receive some additional suggestions and guidance on how best to position that.
Thank you.
Mr. Dowell?
Hey, Mr. Chair. First, hearty thank you to Dr. Heron and staff for taking a look at this so soon after the question was posed just, I think, last meeting, or, yeah, last meeting, I think it was. So thank you for taking that up and finding a way, always kind of pushing that bar and pushing that limit to, to what's best for the students and their families. I, I have no question in my mind that let, next year, those rates of Fs or three of more, those failure rates are gonna be quite improved when we're able to keep them in the classroom for as long as we're able to, regardless of what COVID is doing at that time. So I can see that benefit there. My question was really around the community options available for no-cost testing, and yet we don't see who those community options are. Are we not at liberty to speak of them yet, or?
I feel like I had permission yesterday when, when we met with the health advisory team. If, if it is not included in our communication that goes out later, we, we will try to make sure that it is included.
Right, great, thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
That's all I had, thank you.
Any other comments from board members? Ms. Young?
Thank you for the slides about high school return. That's very encouraging, but approximately, do we have a percentage of high school students that have returned? I know we talked about it last week, but, I mean, where are we?
Ms. Young, it, based on the numbers I have in front of me from Mr. Walker, that was from Monday morning, now this, this was presumed to return. Remember, we, we are two days in, so there, there may be some fluctuation based on that. But it appears to me somewhere in the neighborhood of 3,700, 3,783 secondary students have returned on site.
Excellent, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any idea how many that is of?
How many that is of?
Like, how many, how many secondary students do we have?
6175.
A little over 50%?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So we are, right now, it appears that just over 1,000 students have made the determination to remain remote
Okay.
with that option. So 1,300 or so students in the secondary level involved in the Virtual Academy, an additional 1,000-plus decided to stay remote to close out the year, 3,783 on-site to close the year.
Okay. Okay, so we, we have most of them accounted for.
I will tell you that we have them all accounted for.
There we go. Okay. Any other comments from board members? Along the lines of Ms. Owenby, and this may not be a part of the question, I know we've talked about graduation for our high schools, any thought on GED graduation? And it's one of my more favorite events of the year, and, and where we are as far as how many GED graduates we have and if we're gonna have a ceremony.
We'll follow up with you on that, Mr. Kelly.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other, anything else? It's, uh, it's exciting to, as we keep making steps to get back to where we're, where we should be with five days a week, and, or actually where we want to be, and appreciate the efforts of staff and, and our teachers of, of working towards that, towards that end goal. So appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anybody mind if I go to a policy now? 8.01, revised policy DLB salary deductions. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Ewen, Chief Financial Officer, will take us through the next two policies, 8.01 and 02. Thank you, Ms. Ewen.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. This agenda item is to revise policy DLB salary deductions. This policy was last revised in 2015. There are no substantive changes to the policy, just a couple of verbiage updates and cross-reference updates. Our attorney has reviewed, as well as the policy committee, and recommend approval of the policy as presented. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from board members? 8.02, revised policy DLC, expense reimbursements.
This agenda item is to revise policy DLC, expense reimbursements. This policy was also last revised in 2015. Again, there are no substantive changes to the policy, just verbiage updates and cross-reference updates as well. Again, our attorney has reviewed, as well as the policy committee, and recommend approval of the policy as presented. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions?
Mr. Chair, I would just add that there was one relatively significant removal from this policy, which was on line 12 of the red line. We took out any examples of what would constitute a statement of travel with supporting documents. We took out any example, and we found that it might be appropriate to do that because within that block, we had taken out one example, but then left the others, but the VSBA policy has no examples, and so we just figured we would just be more in line with VSBA on that one.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other?
Also, just along that, with the detailed meal receipts, we're at a per diem now, correct?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
So that was another reason why that was removed.
Right, so there's no reason to provide receipts if you're on per diem. Great, thank you. Thank you for that, Ms. Ewen, thank you for the policy committee for reviewing those. We will add those to our consent agenda at the next meeting. A little buster just a little of time until Mrs. Aller gets into her chair.
Thank you.
Before I say, can I get a motion to approve the personnel actions as presented this evening?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Young, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell, is there any discussion? Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Owenby?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. Next item, can I get a motion to approve the purchase request for world language instructional materials to Vista Higher Learning, Carnegie, Savas, and Cambridge with a total cost of $385,500 and approve associated budget transfer?
Yeah, I, I moved that we approve the purchase request for world language instructional materials to Vista Higher Learning, Carnegie, Savas, and Cambridge with a total cost of $385,500 and approve associated budget transfer.
Thank you, Dr. Beers, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Owenby, or is that Ms. Hummel? Ms. Hummel. Any discussion? Ms. Aller?
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Owenby?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the word of contract for request for proposal number 21-15127, architectural services for the War Hill High School Auxiliary Gymnasium to HBA Architecture and Interior Design for the final negotiated price of $298,748.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a word of contract for request for proposal 21-15127, architectural services for the War Hill High School Auxiliary Gymnasium to HBA Architecture and Interior Design for the final negotiated price of $298,748.
Thank you, Ms. Young, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. So this, this item was a discussion item on our agenda in March?
March 2nd, Mr. Chair.
March 2nd, and, and we bring it to us now because?
Uh, they were just working through the process with purchasing.
Okay, right. So we talked about, we talked about it, and so notice it said negotiated price, so that, so it took, took a while to get through the purchasing process in order to get us to a purchase order.
Correct, sir.
Oof, that was hard to say that. Any questions or comments? Ms., Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Owenby?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. 10.01, board member comments. Ms. Owenby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank our teachers and all of our staff for everything that they do. I think this year, our teacher and staff appreciation, really, we, we, I don't think we can do or say enough. So this has been a, a phenomenal year, and not, and not necessarily in a good way, except our staff and teachers have responded in a, in a phenomenal way. So, so thank you, there's just, I, I think words kind of just fail at the things that you've, the Herculean efforts that everyone has done to meet the needs of our students this year, and wanted to say yay again to our Lafayette, to champions, that was so exciting. My dad is their number-one fan, and so he was not disappointed, so, so that's, congratulations there. And then I just wanted to address the speaker who came tonight. I've asked a couple different times about the, our, the translating apps, and I'm curious about that, and I know that that's not our, our primary means of communicating with families. I don't know if you wanted to expand on that, Dr. Heron?
Um, we do, we translate some documents using an internal interpreter, and we use some using a service, and some others use, use of apps. So all three different vehicles are used for translation, but we'll certainly take the comment tonight under consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. I think, I think we're using lots of different ways to try to support our, our English learners, and nothing is perfect, but we're moving in the right direction, so thank you to staff for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I'd also would like to recognize and very much appreciate all the WJCC teachers[1799.51] Yeah, I'd also would like to recognize and very much appreciate all the WJCC teachers and support staff, especially during this incredibly trying time. They are, they've just been incredible in all the work that they have done. I also would like to mention or comment on the fact that I am really pleased to see how we're dealing with this particular goal that was discussed this evening, safety and security, facilities, transportation safety, how we're trying to operate our technology systems as safely as we possibly can. I'm just, I'm over, I'm just always impressed by the quality of the work that, that goes into these things, and very much appreciate it. I also, and I forgot to mention this, I also need to thank Patty Bowen for putting together some of the information that I spoke about when I talked about the impact of WHRO on our particular school system. Patty is on their Technology Advisory Committee as well, and does an incredible job.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. I appreciate that. Ms. Young?
Yes, again, I want to thank our tremendous teachers and our employees for sticking with it this year, and I think we're going to have a brighter horizon in the fall. I do appreciate them very, very much, and know their dedication and their hard work. Kudos to the Lafayette Rams for the football championship. I've never been a big fan, but it always makes me happy when one of our schools does that. So I'm happy about that. I was, and thank you to Patty Bowen and Dr. Beers for presenting that information on WHRO. It's surprising how many of our students have, are able to access those, those classes and those informative things that they have there. And there's a tremendous library of things that students can look at. I was thinking back when Jessica, Ms. Walter, and Ms. Striff were talking tonight. I remember last May, it's absolutely understandable why doctors did not want students in their, their offices, because last May, I remember my doctor coming outside of the car to, to talk to me, and he stood a long distance away, as though I was the germ itself. And so I totally understand where we are, and I'm, I'm hopeful that this community partnership that we have, that provides clinical experience for our students, and the opportunities for actually being able to go right into the workplace after high school is, is pretty amazing. So I'm hopeful that next year, that this will be a pathway for many of our students. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Hummel?
Thank you. I want to just echo every, everything that my other colleague said tonight about appreciating the faculty and the staff this year. Thank you to all of our presenters tonight. When I look at all four, and I actually look at our strategic plan in general, it's always really good to, to do this kind of reflection, right? To, to take the effort to go through the strategic plan, and go through the goals, and go through the steps, and actually document what we do. It's, it's a lot of work to document what we do, especially in a year like this, where it's unbelievable. It's, to me, it's unbelievable what we did in the name of safety and security this year. So I just wanted to, to say once again, wow, on that, on that topic. I can't, I can't not say anything about Lafayette High School's football victory as a parent of a football player back in 2014 that made it to the semi, that made it to the finals and lost. It was redemption time for a lot of the fans of those, the parents of those team members in the stands this past Saturday. It was just lots of fun to relive those glory days. And then it made me think about the value, once again, of sports, of athletics, of the arts, of our extracurriculars, and how, how vitally important they are to, to, you know, the, the happiness of our, of our children, and how much we missed that this year. So I wanted to just say a big thanks to all the coaches out there, not just, not just the Ram coaches, because they are awesome, but just our coaches everywhere, our band directors, our theater directors, all the people that, that add the spice and the fun into being a student at WJCC. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Mr. Dowell?
I just wanted to, can I, Mr. Chair, Mr. Dowell, add on to something that Ms. Hummel said, made me think? So my son, who's a senior at Lafayette, was given the senior survey, and so he was asked, what is one statement or thought you would share with an incoming freshman as an outgoing senior? And he said, get good grades, get involved in extracurriculars, and have fun. So I think it is the whole, it's the whole package, and Mr. Dr. Beers has mentioned that before, we do a really good job, not just with academics, but those other pieces which are so important to our students' development.
Thank you. Mr. Dowell?
Mr. Chair, I too wanted to just thank Mr. Ms. Bowen and Dr. Beers for the report this evening. And I was just kind of blown away at the numbers, almost 500 students using 25 courses, and online, I'm assuming. They're not getting these through the mail in any way. So I just thought that was really incredible, especially in a COVID environment where we hear a lot of complaint about online learning, and yet they're, they're taking it upon themselves to go do it. Thank you for WHRO to, for making it available and such widespread. I also wanted to thank our speaker tonight for making the effort to come down here and let us know about a deficiency. Our last board meeting, I think we looked at Goal Three Communication, is that right? And that's, you know, one of our highest priorities, making sure that we offer superior communication to our students, their families, their caretakers, our staff, our teachers. And so we do need to hear, that's, that's a constant, ever-changing, ever-moving bar that we're constantly trying to reach. I know it is with my day job. And so to do it for a division this large, it's helpful to hear. So thank you for our speaker coming down here and letting us know where we can be better. And I'm confident that our superintendent will make that happen. Also, thank you to our teachers and our faculty and staff. It's been said, but it is probably, it is one of the, I've got a number one in my mind what the most difficult job is, but it is one of the most difficult jobs in the world, being a teacher and supporting teachers. And I'm married to one, by the way. So thank you, genuinely, thank you.
Thank you. I echo a lot of what everybody else has said, and agree with all the comments that have come forward so far. It seems, it seems in this year particularly, Teacher Appreciation Week is kind of minimal, isn't it? We've had the 12 months, 15 months that the teachers, our teachers have been through, and I know every member of this board appreciates the work that those teachers have done. And we don't need, we don't need a special week for that, but it's good that they're recognized for a special week. The Lafayette Football State Championship, judging from my Facebook feeds, there's lots of people vying for number-one fan. So I'm not sure that we can necessarily give that to any one person, because there's a lot of number-one fans out there. But to echo what Mrs. Hummel said, the, the sports, the theater, the arts, all of those things lead to a sense of community, which has, which we are, we're getting back to this spring with some of our abbreviated sports seasons, and, and seeing the, the success on the, on the, on the athletic fields. But let's, let's hope that we can get back to that in the fall in a, in a big way, and maybe show a little bit more appreciation for all those things in the, in the coming year, because we've missed them so much. So I also want to echo what the, our other board members' comments about the speaker tonight with the translation app, that we really need to look at that, and if there's a, if there's a better app, if there's a better way of doing that, because it's really important that we, that we reach those, those families and get them good communication, particularly in this, in this time of the year. And it's, it's also interesting to look to with the calendar, right? It's May, and we are fastly approaching one of the, the end of one of the most interesting school years probably in history. And all those, you know, in our normal years, we'll be looking, we'd be all putting on our calendars those end-of-the-year events, and we're trying to do that as much as we can with, with our graduations. But, you know, it's, this, this school year is coming to a close, and, and, you know, we need to make sure that we recognize and, and appreciate all the success of our students and our teachers, and as, as we close this school year out, go into the summer. So that's all I have. 11.01, upcoming events, school liaison committee meeting, May 12th at 8:00, which is virtual. Special Education Advisory Committee, May 13th at 6:30 PM, also virtual. We're having a board development retreat on May 14th, from 8:30 to 1:00 here in room 300 of the Annex. 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee meets May 19th at 3:30, also virtual. And the Policy Committee meeting meets on May 20th, 8:30 AM, in a virtual way. Coming school board meetings, May 18th, we have a closed session at 6:00 PM in the Stryker Center. A regular meeting of the boards is at 6:30 after that closed session on May 18th, also in the Stryker Center. And then we have a closed session here on June 1st at 6:00, and followed by a work session and actual items at 6:30 on June 1st. I think we have an understanding of our agenda items for our next meeting after this. And with that, we are adjourned.